You ready, Angie?
Yes, we're good.
Good morning, everyone. We're going to get to December 4th. Commissioners' agenda opened by people with pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, let me say welcome to all of our visitors. And Jason, how many departments up first?
Can I say something that's easy?
Yes, go ahead.
Good morning.
I'd like to thank some of you that have been coming here for a while. We've been having so many issues with our screens and audio and everything. Bob Barkus and Hyperwave Libby came in last Monday, and we have a whole new system now that I think, as I can hear, I can hear myself talking, where we couldn't do that before. But I'd like to thank Hyperwave. As you go through this transition, there may be some blips here and there, but I think in the end we'll have a good product.
So please bear with us if there's a blip. They're making sure things worked out. Is that it?
Yeah, that's a big blip.
Thank you. They in order on the screen? Okay, again, we have some, are you ready, Jason?
Yep.
We have some road cuts and bores. We'll keep them in groups again. First of all is Bright Speed. First one is 5C to Michigan to Olive. It's a directional bore, North Township, for service to a customer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made second, approve the directional bore for Bright Speed on 5C to Michigan to Olive. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have NIPSCO. The first project is Beach and 5B, German Township. Says it's bucket truck to replace utility poles and improve the system reliability. The second one is Sixth and Third Road, the same, in German Township, to improve reliability on utility poles. And the third one is 3B and Third and Elm Road, the same. It's in German Township. It's to improve reliability with a bucket truck. Can you scroll one up some more? Is that the last one here?
That's the last one.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve all three utility agreements with NIPSCO.
Second. Motion made second, approve all three utility agreements for working on, in, with bucket truck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next, we have the contract agreement that was signed on the DocSign by Board President Stan. That was for the end agreement to pay 100% of the construction and that shows you knew. Nothing needs sign, this is just copy.
Information. Yeah, thanks. Yeah, we need, we need motion going to approve this.
Make a motion to approve Contract 63026, as presented.
Second.
And we make, excuse me, motion made second to approve the amendment Contract, excuse me, Contract 63026. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Bridge update on Bridge Number One. That is a local project. The right-of-way acquisition services is to start. Then Stage Three, details to begin within the next two months. Bridge 87, bridge is open. We had a walkthrough on Friday. Minor details to complete, and a lot of that was just cleaning up, like some of the erosion socks, pulling right-of-way stakes and those type of things. And that was pretty much for both those projects, 87 and 120. 232 Randolph Street, submitted construction, stormwater, general permit. Application, continue working on Stage Three, planning production. 231, have no updates from last meeting. Bridge 88, no from last meeting. Mill Pond Dam, topping trees can be completed without permits. Boring samples will completed, be completed, and information will be passed on for review. The permitting will be required for any of the lining of the pipe. Completion of the reconstruction of the downhill or downstream tow is in the water. So basically, when we redo that, the downhill tow is in the water. So to get that elevation, there'll have to be some permitting due to the fact that we're in the water. So what we will probably do is start working on the trees now, get those down. Roadwork wise, we've been working on patching roads for the winter, cutting brush and trees, grading and gravels for winter. Getting stone hauled in for the 2024 Call for Project. Those applications have been submitted. And working on the road program for 2024, which will be presented at the next Commissioners' meeting. That's all I got.
I have one question. Mill Pond, is that going to be the expense all on us, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Thought that was the case, I always want to make sure.
Which I don't think it's going to be horrible.
I think the estimate on the lining was, what, 25 to 30,000?
25,000 to 35,000. A lot of the tree work we'll do. Even the permitting fees and that, I don't think they're going to be anything astronomical. And we're still trying to do a majority of that work in-house. I still think a lot of that can be done on our own.
You have anything for Jason?
I do not.
Do you have an announcement you would like to make to the public?
Me?
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Thank you for your support.
Weren't you elected to a position for the Northwest for?
Yes.
He wasn't there at the meeting.
That's what you get for not being there.
So I was appointed, or nominated, as a Northwest Director for the IAEX, which would be for the Northwest District.
Indiana County Highways Engineers and Supervisors.
Association.
Yep.
So a lot of that information, we take back down, gather, and report that. And it's just a trickle effect that goes to a lot of what happens with the legislators, too. So, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You'll have a seat at the table for all these negotiations or highway funding and stuff. Is that what I'm hearing?
It's part of it.
Yep, good.
So have those representatives in your back pocket when I call, and we need to have a meeting somewhere.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well deserved.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Unless you've got something else. I wasn't going to let you off the hook that easy, Jason.
I didn't hear that one. Next one is Veteran Service. Pam? Oh, there she is, I looked right over you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't have a lot of numbers ready this morning. I've been front-loading veterans that don't have heat right now, and homeless veterans in four that have late-stage cancer. So I've been working pretty hard with those guys and not, I didn't get my reports, my numbers done. So, but I will get those to you probably before the end of the day.
That's fine.
That's fine.
It's been crazy, crazy busy. I am, I have been turning away veterans from Michigan. Fort Wayne is now sending me veterans.
Nice to be popular.
No, no, it's not. But we're getting them taken care of. The DAV at the Council on Aging, they've brought in John Rodriguez from East Chicago to do a lot of claims for them. And what he's doing is, he's signing them up with the DAV. He's doing a third-party release for them, and then sending them to me to do the claims themselves. So I have turned some of those veterans away. They have to go back to him because he is their VSO, so that we don't duplicate the work. So I've been fighting that for three months, actually since August with him. So they did train three of their members. There, Al McVay, Steve Beam, and another one. They sent them down for two days of training with the DAV. So they're doing disability claims. I told those guys if they had questions and stuff, they could call me. But once they, once they sign them up with the DAV, they need to handle those claims themselves. So I don't want the liability of those. I didn't train, I didn't train them, and I'm not there from the beginning till the end, so.
Do some of these people not have VSO agents up in Michigan, or do they?
The one up in Michigan is, she's kind of a...
New?
No.
Oh, okay. That's, you're not saying more.
You've heard that story before.
Yeah.
Word spreads like wildfire.
Yep.
They come here.
Yep, yep. I did meet with the social workers at the VA clinic, and they apologized. They said that, you know, they're sorry they're sending everybody down here, but they don't have anywhere else to send them, so. I'm trying to help them and guide them and get them to where they can be. And a lot of our veterans that are coming back right now, they're doing their own claims on the Internet. So once that doesn't go through, they come to me to try and help them clean it up. That's where that's at.
And...
Go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
And you take care of the Marshall County ones first, correct?
I'm front-loading Marshall County.
Yeah.
I'm actually rearranging schedules to, I will, if I have to call somebody from another county and cancel with them, or reschedule them out. I'm scheduling in the January right now. If I have to do that to get a Marshall County veteran in, I will do that, and they know that. I give them that heads up before, you know, I might have to reschedule you.
Individually, do they just reach out to you, or are they being sent here?
Both. A lot of it is word of mouth. A lot of it is word of mouth. But the VA clinic is sending me anybody, everybody that's coming in there. They're sending them to me. Kevin's office is slammed, too, in St. Joe County. He slammed.
Yeah.
I did find out that Elkar, the VSO in Elkar is not doing his claims. He has two assistants in the office that they're doing the claims, and he signs off on it. LaPorte is retiring. Both LaPorte people are retiring. Fulton County is going to retire. Cosiasko has a, he has kind of an attitude, so people won't go to him. Stark County.
Just keep going. I pass it.
Stark County. And that's, that's it, so, yeah.
All right. I was just curious.
I would like to make a, I don't say recommendation, but, you know, we talk about this every year in your evaluations. So why don't you think about it? We're going to be setting the date, that'll be today, for evaluations coming up, and we'll discuss this and tell us what we need to do to support you, because we want to take care of these veterans. I don't think we should turn any of them away, even from other county.
Right.
They did their, they did their service. They paid, they paid their dues, and they deserve the service. But it's unfortunate that it's all being shoved on you. So if we, we offer every year and you don't take it, so if you need help...
Yep.
Please let, please think about it, let us know your evaluation, okay?
I've got, I've got a male and a female that would both be really, really good at assisting. One is a caregiver right now. Actually, they're both caregivers for other people, and right now they can't even come on board. So, but I would trust those two.
Let me ask you something, too.
To do a good job.
You guys don't, you okay with this? Is mental health a part of it also, that you're fighting?
Mental health with the veterans?
Yes.
I had security in my office two times last week.
Okay.
Yeah, with two legitimate crazies.
That's always a problem.
Yeah.
That, it hasn't been a problem so much, just these two. Denny escorted a female out that wasn't even a veteran. And Rex escorted a veteran out who was, he's just crazy. Not from his service, he's just crazy. But he wouldn't leave. I mean, he was here for over two hours. His disability isn't from his time in service.
You see what you need, you let us know when we do your evaluation here next few weeks, so, okay? We'll talk about this more. If you need help, you know, we want to support you.
Okay.
Okay.
I need other counties to do their veterans.
Yeah. If we can only control what happens there.
Right, exactly.
Somewhat.
Thank you very much for your, what you do for the veterans.
You're welcome.
Next one's a museum. Sandy and Mike Marley.
Good morning.
Morning. Morning. Please state your names and your titles for the record, please.
I'm Sandy Garrison. I'm the Director of the Marshall County Museum.
Mike Marley, President of Marshall County Historical Society.
Good morning. Morning, Michael. Oh, thank you.
So as ever, your packet has the most recent newsletter and documents from the October Historical Society Board Meeting, plus flyers from some of our recent programs. We've just had an excellent year at the museum. I couldn't be happier. We logged more than 6,300 visitors, and that was up 30% from last year, and 4,624 volunteer hours. We also accessioned more than 1,500 artifacts that tell our county's story and fulfilled 400-plus research requests. Plus, just this quarter, we hosted five special events. We also opened two exhibits in November. And the story I'd like to share with you this morning comes from one of those, which is called "Marshall County on Fire", which explores how disasters shaped our communities and led to positive changes. And you know that Tori has some pictures to share with you, but I wanted to, to set the scene a little bit. So throughout the nation in the 19th century, towns often began as clusters of wooden buildings, heated and lit by open flame. Locally, add to that a booming lumber industry and sparks from passing railroads, and now you have a recipe more or less for disaster. Large-scale downtown fires became increasingly common. But this often led to a growth in interest in safety standards. These included the organization of volunteer fire departments, changes to less flammable building materials like brick and tin, and the creation of waterworks, such as the Bremen Standpipe. But another really striking aspect of local disasters was how they drove people together. We saw this over and over in the newspaper reports we read during our research, and we really felt that said a lot about the character of local residents. And we have time this morning to share one example with you, and it was chosen by our research staff because the fire happened in December. So, fire is actually terrible at any time. But when it happens on Christmas Eve and during wartime, it is even more shocking. And that is exactly what happened in 1944 at the Elkar Coach Company in Bourbon. And actually, the, the first picture was just to show you where the plant was located. It was on the right-hand side of the block, I'm not, of the picture. I'm not sure if you're familiar with Bourbon. That block had held the former Opera House and the Frilly Department Store, which was quite well-known in the day. So the blaze started about 7:00 PM. There was a muffled explosion, and the building was almost immediately engulfed. And a lot of this information is coming right from the newspaper, so it sounds kind of traumatic. The Bremen, Warsaw, and Plymouth Fire Departments were called to assist. Many men leaving church and family events to help. And in fact, they came so quickly, most did not have time to dress warmly. So the community provided them with hot coffee and food as they worked. The paper later reported that barrels of paint thinner exploded, and the booming as they blew up could be heard throughout the night. The last big crash occurred as the front of the Opera House tumbled onto Main Street, reaching almost all the way across and hurling hot bricks onto the sidewalk. The building was completely destroyed, even the contents of the safe, due to the intense heat. It was conjectured that the fire was caused by an overheated furnace, but the exact cause was never known. Amazingly, no one was hurt during the blaze, but 40 employees were now without jobs. But the community, community immediately came together, and temporary facilities were found for the company. But following the fire, the town and the community waited with bated breath to learn if the factory, so vital to our little city, could be rebuilt. In less than 10 days, they had their answer. On January 4th, the newspaper stated that the factory would be reopened. The editor said that Bourbon was more than happy to have the attention of the company, as many would be employed when the factory was able to resume operations, and that these men were the good kind that lived in about the Bourbon area. They are the reliable kind, and that is worth possessing in any organization. The community wanted Elkar Coach to know that they were mighty happy. And I think we have a picture of the new factory. By the end of January, preliminary work had begun. The building of the new factory brought the community to the zenith of happiness, thankfulness, and gratification. And by July, the newspapers were running ads for the new Elkar Plant. One of the most fun things about doing the research for this particular exhibit was actually reading all of the old stories out of the paper. It was, it was just really, really fascinating. That does bring me to the end of my report for today, but if you haven't been into the exhibit, I hope you'll come and visit. The stories really are quite gripping. We're going to be using the exhibit as the backdrop for our Kids' Day program, which will be on December 27th, which will focus on fire safety. And we're holding that in conjunction with the Plymouth Fire Department. And then in January, we're hoping to host the county meeting of the fire departments. We'll be welcoming all the representatives in to see the exhibit. And they've asked for an encore of the presentation we prepared for the Northern Indiana Mayor's Roundtable about the exhibit. But thank you for your attention this morning, and always for your work with us at the museum. And if there's any questions, I would be happy to try to answer those.
Any questions?
Yeah.
I don't.
All right. Kevin?
I stopped there a few, was it a month ago I stopped there?
I'm sorry?
I stopped there a month ago, went upstairs and...
Yeah. Happy to show you around.
I was quite impressed with what you have upstairs there.
Thank you.
It's amazing.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add one thing. We, we were open Friday night for the Plymouth Parade and Christmas Tree Lighting from 4:00 to 6:00 with our train room. We had over 200 visitors come through in that two hours, so.
Yeah.
There were a lot of people downtown. They came in at our museum and toured it.
Yeah, and a lot of people specifically mentioned they were coming in to see the fire exhibit, so we were excited about that.
Yeah.
The trains are always a big draw, and we run those during the special events, too. But, you know, we were pleased with the number of people that were coming in to see the exhibit, too.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
Appreciate it, too. Thank you. Plymouth Library Board, Steve Burris. Good morning. Would you just please state your name and title for the record?
Good morning. Stephen Burris, Plymouth Library Director. I'm here this morning to request the appointment of Patrick Malloy to the Library Board, beginning in January 1st of 2024. He will be replacing Diane Evelyn, as she has exhausted her 16-year commitment.
So he starts off with first?
Exhausted.
Yeah, I think she's, she's retired, she's moving, I think, out of state, so, but...
Do I have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Patrick Malloy to replace our long-serving...
Long-serving, that's a good way to put it.
Appointment.
She's been amazing, so.
Second. Motion made second to approve Patrick Malloy as the new Plymouth Library Board Members, beginning January 1st, 2024. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Preparation departments, Jim here?
Diggs down there at the library.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got to get in there.
Jim here? Is he running ahead? Oh, we're way ahead.
Yep.
That's why he's not here. Okay, we'll jump on down to Culver Lake, Max and Cucky Visitor Center. Karen?
I've come to help. There's other people that are going to help Karen, but they're not here yet, since you're running early, so I'm going to sub in.
So, good morning. Karen Schuman, part of the Culver Visitor Center and also the Culver Redevelopment Commission. So we're here to discuss the ordinance for the innkeepers, and are requesting the county to look at that ordinance to make sure that it's in alignment with the Indiana Code. The current membership on the, on that board does not necessarily represent all the county and makes the decisions based on the comprehensive plan of the county and the recreation facilities, and also in the concept of making sure that the tax dollars are fully represented in the communities that generate that tax revenue. So with that, I know you all have seen a copy of the current ordinance and then the copy of the suggested ordinance, and we know that Mr. Clevenger has also reviewed it, too.
Marty Ostervan of the Culver Redevelopment Commission. Just to give you a sense as to what the issues are with the current ordinance. It is a 31-year-old ordinance, the county ordinance, and since then, the state law has changed. And also, the tourism economy in this county has changed as well. The innkeeper's tax generated under that ordinance is now in excess of $500,000 a year. And, and so it's obviously a significant amount of money that's being managed. The, one of the issues with the current ordinance is that the, two board members, used to be three, are appointed by non-elected officials. Their chambers of commerce are appointing bodies under the current ordinance. So you essentially have private citizens appointed by non-elected officials managing tax dollars. And that's, that's probably not ideal. The current ordinance also has a call for political balance, and that's no longer a requirement under the, the state statute, the enabling statute. So currently, the, the ordinance has the various towns in Marshall County, along with those chambers of commerce, doing appointments. And I suppose you could fix the non-elected, you know, appointees by just having the towns, you know, make those, you know, the local municipalities do that. But the state law also requires that the majority of the board be engaged in the businesses of tourism, or convention, or hospitality. And when you parcel out the appointments across the various municipalities, you, it becomes impossible to control it so that you do, in fact, have compliance with the law and the majority of the appointees actually engaged in the convention and tourism business. So we've suggested you can solve that by you, the commissioners, making the appointments yourselves, because then you can, you know, control and make sure that you have the majority. The state law does require that the largest municipality in the county select a number of board members that is commensurate with their population, you know, the ratio of their population to the county. So the way that math works out is that Plymouth would have about 20%, or, you know, in a five-member board, would get one selection. I don't know that Sean is here. I, he wasn't here when we came up.
I haven't seen him yet. Seen him yet.
We're way ahead, though, too.
Yeah, we're way ahead, too.
But I've spoken with Sean, and, and Plymouth is understanding of what we're suggesting and has no issues that they have indicated to me with regard to the ordinance. So I guess I'll, I'll leave it with you. We have suggested some people, and provided some letters of interest, not necessarily thinking that you would be making any appointments today. You know, you've got an ordinance to change, and probably multiple readings to do with that ordinance. But we do have some very highly qualified people in the county that really understand this business, that we think should be considered at the appropriate time, should you decide to go that way. And then Jim, I'll just, did I, did I characterize that right?
You did. I, I gave you guys a heads up on this.
Right, right.
Our existing ordinance, I think, is, goes back to 1991 at .7 members, and is pointed out, some of the members are appointed by town councils, some are, there's three of them appointed by Chamber of Commerce folks. And, you know, they've been charged with, I guess, divvying up the revenue from the innkeeper's tax and so forth. The statute under which our 1991 ordinance was, I assume, created, has been modified. And it calls for the county executive to determine the number of members, and it has to be an odd number, and then also how you're going to have them appointed. This proposed ordinance calls for just five members of the commission, not seven. And, and then, of course, four of them would be appointed by the commissioners under the new proposed ordinance. One would be appointed by the mayor of the city of Plymouth. I, I did see the, as I said in the email... I did see the, as I said in the email, if, you know, we do need to make some change to the ordinance because the old ordinance doesn't comply with the present state statute. So we need to do something. And if you're going to do this, this sounds good. I suggested if you do this and pass it, that you, you know, leave it open for folks to apply if they're wanting to do so. I have no problems with any of the suggested people that are there. A couple of them more than are qualified to fit what's necessary. The key is, is a simple majority must be engaged in the convention visitor or tourism business or involved in or promoting conventions, visitors, or tourism. So you have to have, if you go with five, you have to have at least three people that meet that qualification.
I saw Sean come in. Sean, do you have any input? Oh, there he is. He's right up there. Yeah. Say your name, Sean.
Sean Cerici, Plymouth City Attorney. Just on behalf of the city of Plymouth, we're supportive of the changes. And I appreciate the suggestion of the process of having people apply once the changes are made. And I think that's particularly would be well-suited for Plymouth that's going through a transition to a new mayor right now.
Matt, you have any?
You know, we, at Swan Lake, we're lucky that we have been in this business for quite a while.
Can you come up so it's recorded? Yeah. And state your name and who you're with.
Matt Hoover-Male, General Manager at Swan Lake Resort, also part of the ownership team at Swan Lake. You know, over the last eight years, we have provided approximately 25% of the innkeeper's tax that has gone on. And, you know, at least in my time, in the four years that we've owned it, and then previously as the Assistant General Manager, I have not been contacted at all to even be a part of any of this. And that just seems kind of odd to me. Not that we're the perfect group, but, you know, we do a lot with that and do a lot in the community with the tourism. And, you know, so we're excited to see this as a possibility and see this possibly go forward.
So Jim, do you have the ordinance, the new ordinance drafted?
Well, yes.
That we'll have to have a...
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
The ordinance that was part of the packet that Marty submitted is, I think, identical to the one that I had drafted many months ago. And, you know, you recall, we had a little disagreement between the existing board and these folks coming in. And that apparently didn't get resolved. So that ordinance just has been sitting there. And I, the ordinance that's been drafted is, if not identical, almost identical to what I picked together before for a five-member board. But I didn't know whether that's what you guys wanted to do or not.
I would say, I was there. We had a meeting, what, between the two groups last, was it February?
Yeah, it's almost a year ago.
About a year ago. And I just went in, sat down on the list, and then, of course, Marty and Jenny and I and Sean talked afterwards about it after the meeting was over. And basically, it got down to the money. And basically, a couple entities in the county are generating the majority of the money. However, the problem I have is I would agree elected officials should appoint these board members. But I would like to see representation from each town and let them appoint their member to that board and follow the guidelines. I think we start eliminating, because it is called Marshall County Tourism as a whole. And I understand some people don't have as big a stake in the game as others do in the county. So, but still, everybody has something to bring to the table. I mean, even Tiner has their tractor pulling stuff. Breaman has a couple of beds. Obviously, more comes with Swan Lake and Culver and Plymouth. Obviously, that's where the majority of the tax comes from. But I just don't feel it's fair that not everybody has, at least has a seat at the table to have participation if we're going to call it Marshall County Tourism.
The only problem with that is, is that by the new statute, I mean, to be engaged in convention visitor or tourism business or involved in promoting conventions, visitors, or tourism. You know, I guess if we use a liberal reading, I suppose we can find somebody like that. But I don't know that... It seems to me that the potential commission members are narrowed significantly if we need a simple majority in every case of the board that fits those requirements. I mean, I get it, but I mean, I don't know that, for instance, a Tiner representative for the tractor pull...
I just point out, even the smallest has something.
...would meet the qualifications of, and have that simple majority. Now, he could be one of the other, you know, other members, but...
And I'm not advocating for Tiner. It's just, they aren't incorporated anyhow. I'm talking about the Breamans and the Arguses. And everybody would have a, should have a seat at the table.
Argus would be Angel.
Yeah.
Ballsway. She runs the gallery on the west down there.
Well, from their proposed people, they did try to spread it out as I...
They did try to spread it out.
They had somebody from Culver, somebody from Argus. Is Brian Teal living in Breaman?
Brian's from Breaman, yes.
So we did, we did try to do that. And again, those are just suggestions. The key to me, sir, is that you need a, you need a way to control it to make sure you have the majority with experience. And if you allow the individual towns to make the appointments, they're not going to be in concert with each other. And you may not wind up with that majority that you need to be in compliance.
I guess I would say the towns would basically give us suggestions that would be approved by the commissioners, so we'd control that. I just don't like the idea of certain towns potentially being locked out, having a seat at the table. If we're going to call it Marshall County Tourism, it has to be. I think everybody should have a input.
So correctly, with the four, with four seats being put in by the commissioner, that gives more control that you guys have over who puts in those seats, from what areas, than the towns themselves. So in a sense, it gives you more control by having those four seats appointed by you than by each individual town appointing one.
So what you're...
I would agree with what Karen just said. It seems like it's...
If a town...
Went off rail years ago.
And if a town has interest, then they can apply for one of those seats with the Marshall County Commissioners, is the way I'm seeing and reading and hearing it.
Yes.
And we could make an appointment based upon that application.
And we're back within the state statute.
Yes.
I mean, that's the problem we got now is...
Yeah, we're not...
The existing board would never comply with the state statute.
No.
So do you want to set this up for next meeting for hearing and public, a public hearing?
What's our timeframe as far as advertising for a public hearing?
Three days. Is it 10 or is it?
It'd have to probably be out 30 days.
Yeah.
So we could do it for January.
The second meeting?
If we got it advertised this week, we could get it for a January meeting.
That's what I think we should do. I would, I'd agree. That would give everybody a chance to respond and have the input put in it before we do any further. You okay with that? Everybody knew that?
Yeah, no, I'm fine.
So we'll advertise the existing draft for a public hearing in January.
Yes. And if we want to make adjustments, we'll make adjustments. But at least that's a starting point.
And do you want to hold off until you approve the ordinance before making applications on people coming in?
I think we need to pass the ordinance first.
At least after the first reading.
After the first reading.
Yeah.
Jim, I'd like to... There'll be some public input.
Excuse me, Kevin. Jim, I just want to make clarification. There may have been one change since you drafted that. And that there's, I believe in the draft that you have, there's a reporting requirement back to the commissioners. And that's not, I don't know that that was in the initial draft. It may have been, I don't, I just don't...
Yeah, but I didn't have a problem with that. I thought that was appropriate, that the Tourism Commission will provide an annual report to the commissioners.
I really would prefer semi-annual, so we know what's going on. We ask all of our department heads to come in a couple of times a year.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe we make it annually, but I think it would be nice to come in. I got a question, Marty. Did you say $500,000 that's generating?
$500,000. Actually, actually, the revenues last year were $571,000.
Okay, because I thought that was a lot lesser amount than was talked about last February.
Yes, it's, it was about $300,000 back then. But the Airbnbs now are contributing to the pool.
Yeah. And that's the kicker, you can't track that money.
Yeah.
So we don't know which township or which area that money, the Airbnbs, is coming from, if I remember right.
Yeah, and, and there's a lot of Airbnbs that try to sidestep that, you know? So there's kind of a compliance thing. If you've got a strong enough board and they're on top of their, you know, the issues, they can, they can work to actually increase that funding significantly, which we're hoping is one of the outcomes by reconstituting the board.
Okay, well, that's...
I would make this, I don't know if it's a overkill or not, but you're talking semi-annual, you know? Pretty much make these appointments. And I would rather see him come in once a quarter, like all of our other department heads. At least the public is hearing what's going on because I don't think that that is happening currently. And I think that that would be a better fit, especially if we're making the majority of the appointments. It would be just like our department heads that come in once a quarter, give us an update. And I think that's important, especially when you're generating $500,000.
We, we would appreciate that in Culver as the, and I'm speaking for the visitor center. They're, we don't, we're not comfortable with the current level of transparency.
Yeah.
And it might be just be that whoever, whoever the head of the board is or the administrator could just come in and give us some brief updates.
They may be doing a great job. I'm not suggesting otherwise. I'm just saying, we don't know. We don't even know who the board members are. It's not on their website. It's, we could, we could use a lot more sunlight on this. There's a lot of money involved.
Okay.
May I suggest we will change paragraph six to provide an annual written report to the commissioners detailing revenues, expenses, results, and plans with the commissioner, commission representative reporting quarterly. I mean, I, do you want to put the onus on them to have, you know, have detailed revenue, expense, result every time? I don't know.
No, quarterly, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate everyone's input.
Merry Christmas.
You too. James, I seen him walk in. Here he is. James Bendy, Information Department.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Using my voice. So I'm here this morning to request that we be able to accept the $60,000 grant that we applied for, for the Justice Services Addiction Response Grant. We utilize that grant for a recovery services person. That person develops a packet of information of all the resources that we have in the community, food, clothing, that type thing, for our clientele. We also distribute that out to a lot of the various entities that are in town to help with their individuals. We give them to the jail treatment coordinator to give to the inmates and that type thing. And we create little packets with this money to give to the inmates so they've got something when they leave there. That gives them something that can, can help them with finding resources. We also use this money to supplement our pretrial services. We don't, they cap the benefits on our pretrial grant for the individuals that are involved. So we've always used this, this grant to help supplement the pretrial dollars for the salaries and the benefits out of it. And we also utilize it for Red Ribbon Week. We passed out about 1,100 little bottles of, and bracelets and stuff like that for Red Ribbon Week to the schools. And we partner with the Drug Free Committee that we have in this county. And we use a speaker's fee that we have for community outreach out of that grant also. Last year, we were able to bring in the Sullivans, which spoke to the various high schools in the community. And so that's what we use this money for. And I'm just asking that we be able to accept that. They did it kind of backwards. They gave us the $15,000. They're doing it quarterly this year. They gave us the $15,000 and they gave us a letter that said, "You got it." And then they sent the contract last week, so... I'm just asking that we be able to accept that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request from the probation for the 2024 Justice Partner Addiction Response Grant award in the amount of $60,000.
Second. Motion made second to approve the 2024, the acceptance of the 2024 Justice Partners Addiction Response Grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, James. And next we have attorney's report.
Okay. Attorney's report under old business. Still waiting for approval of our dismissal on that quiet title action up at the Lake of the Woods channel. And I reached out to plaintiff's counsel but didn't hear back. I'll try again. I did draft the new farm lease contract and sent it to Mr. Voorhees. I haven't received that back, but probably wouldn't have expected it quite yet. Personnel policy, smoking prohibition. I need some guidance from you all. Annette was, Haining was in last time and wanted to propose a change to our personnel policies, change to the handbook, section 5.10. I adopted, or her language, or for the most part adopted, I tweaked it a little bit as part of a new personnel policy, if you remember the language she handed out. However, I had some input from some of you about the need to accept an outdoor, open-air location approved by you all for county employees, rather than making it a cross-the-board prohibition on all county property, all county vehicles, all that kind of thing. So the amendment that I have is pretty much identical to the one, the language that was proposed at the last meeting, with the exception that I added on the next, a third to last paragraph, except for an outdoor, open-air location approved by the county commissioners for county employees. Did I send you that?
Yep.
Yep.
So would that mean we would designate a smoking area?
Well...
We haven't, right now, let's be honest, we have a couple of people down here smoking in the corner of the building.
Exactly.
And to be honest with you, I appreciate, I don't smoke. I don't want to, don't want to be around it, you know?
Same way.
But they have their rights too. And I just, the more I thought about it, I got a little uncomfortable with that part of it. I didn't respond to you, but I did get a little uncomfortable with that part of it. And I don't want to drive people to the corner of the, you know, of the property.
Just to add into this scenario. I was going out to the hospital for six weeks at night and going into the emergency room or coming out of the emergency room. That's supposed to be a smoke-free campus, but there's cigarette butts out there. There's people outside smoking. And how are they policing that and they expect us to police this?
Yeah. I don't know how you're going to police it.
I'm okay with designating, you know, with the rest of it, but I think we should designate wherever we want them to go.
Yeah, I don't know whether the courthouse has any employees that take smoking breaks outside or not.
I don't know.
I've never seen it, but that doesn't mean they're not.
And I don't know out at the highway or at the jail. But I guess it...
I know the intentions are good, but how do you police it? And what's the penalty?
Fire them.
Yeah, okay. See, I know that stands up. But I agree with Stan, you know, some of these people, you know, whether you like it or not, they do have some rights and...
That's what concerns me.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, I drafted the proposed amendment included... Well, anyway, I drafted the proposed amendment, included that exception. So I ju- I don't know how you want to act on it or not act on it or do whatever, but there it is.
Personally, my dad, my dad died of cancer a lot of years ago, never smoked. I don't wish that on anybody. I, I watched it. Uh, but they still have their rights and I struggle with them not, you know, they're good, good people, good employees, and I thi- I think we need to be careful of their rights also.
Jennifer, can you come up here a second, please?
There you go.
Now you did it.
It's all about her. No, now she done one of it about her.
This is an HR issue, if anything.
Yeah.
What, I'd like to get your feedback, please.
Uh, me personally, I do like the additive that was put into the policy. Um, because right, we have a lot of good employees and you're not gonna place it. There's, there's absolutely no way. Um, just by changing that, you're just gonna push them someplace that's probably not good anyway. Um, so really I like that that was put in.
To designate a smoking area?
Yeah.
I remember when I first came in, they allowed smoking up in the break room. Then we cut that out because of the smell and people start, well, I don't like it when people heat up their food in the microwave because it stinks the break room up. So it was a little contentious there for a while.
Thank you, JD.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Well, you're not really welcome, but that's okay.
Exactly.
Personally, I, I, I like the idea of what Jim's added in there to what we designated spot. Could be the same spot they do now. Cause I think it meets state requirements.
Yeah, it, it has to be so many feet away from the door. I mean, that's required.
And, and, you know, uh, outside, you're not hurting anybody as far as, you know, secondhand.
Yep.
In my opinion. I mean, I go out there and walk by to my vehicle and.
You guys are the ones who walk by there more often than anybody else.
It doesn't bother me. I've, I've never had an issue with it. Again, if you smoke in the break room, I'd probably have an issue with that, but
Well, yeah.
I don't, I don't this. And I, and I want to be cognizant of why, after watching my dad die, I would, I would encourage everybody to quit smoking, not take the risk, but it's their right.
Yep.
So do you have that change in this new policy?
Yeah, I didn't get a number for it, but.
Uh, it'd be twenty twenty-three dash thirty.
I make a motion to approve twenty twenty-three dash thirty as amended to include a designated smoking area for county employees.
Seven.
Motion made second to approve, uh, twenty twenty-three dash thirty as an amendment to our handbook policy concerning smoking and the areas designating a smoking, uh, area. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, then why don't we just take it up on second, third reading?
Next.
Next meeting, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, also, um, I drafted an MOU for the hiring of Ms. Gibson, um, you know, to use the unrestricted opioid settlement that you all approved at the last meeting, but I had to make some adjustments on that and so we're still working on that. But, uh, hopefully I'll have that ready for signature and, and short term, uh, under, I call revisited business because none of this is really sort of new. Uh, we took care of county tourism. Uh, the next item, change of our ARP funds. Um, just kind of a little ba- bit of a background. I was contacted by the regional sewer district people about, um, this, this use of the ARP funds that was going to be setting up this, uh, uh, grant funding for, for, to assist, uh, low income households in connecting to the sewer district or so forth. And as part of a meeting with the county council's, uh, lawyer and the lawyer for, uh, the district, um, if I was advised by Mr. Levin that the council has now changed their thinking on this and they're gonna, uh, fund this money out of the general fund so that they can, uh, I guess not worry about it not being, meeting the requirements of the proper use of ARP money that's going to the, uh, the community foundation. Uh, and then they're gonna use, I guess, this five hundred thousand that was gonna be used to the, to go to the community foundation for some other purpose, but, um, Mr. Levin didn't know what that other purpose was. And I asked him if the county executive was, was, maybe you were gonna bring this up, Mr. Stan? I don't know, but.
I was going to, and you, you, you sent the email out. That's basically all I knew too, so.
Okay, so, um, uh, you know, the, the AR, use of the ARP money is your plan and you're supposed to be making decisions. So if they're changing the program, seems like there ought to be some communication. I don't, I, I, it might be just the committee at this point. I don't know that the council's taking it up.
It was just a committee that, I don't think the council's discussed it, but I'm aware of.
Right, so, uh, but there needs to be some communication and some meeting of the minds on what's going on with that. Um, the, the district, uh, is going forward with a plan to, uh, do a new collection system around the, the lakes, Lawrence Lake, Myers Lake, Twin Lakes area, Mill Pond, Lake Letanka. And, uh, since we didn't give them any seed money, they're gonna have to borrow money for that, which I think was one of the reasons kind of prompted all this. But, um, uh, and I get it. I mean, they're probably the folks around Orange Lake, Myers Lake, Lake Letanka are not probably gonna qualify for grant funds. Twin Lakes, Mill Pond might be a little different story. But, um, anyway, uh, that, so I think the district is proceeding, but having the ability to have people that can't have the funds right away to connect into the line is a big plus for, for them. So I, I know that they're interested in, in that program to some extent because it is a benefit to the district. Um, on some litigation matters, uh, I'm still shaking my head over the one, the, uh, the, it, so you all know, I, I brought this up a couple of meetings ago or several meetings ago. The judge agreed with the sheriff's position that we had kind of proposed and dismissed the sheriff from a divorce dispute over retirement funds. Um, but the ex-wife is not happy with that and is appealing. I don't know whether she's appealing now the decision as to how those funds were divvied up, uh, between husband and wife, or whether they're appealing the fact that the sheriff was dismissed out of it or part of it. So we're gonna have to monitor that appeal to some extent. And sorry about that because it seems to be a waste of attorney fees, but that's the way it is. And then, um, I advised you earlier that, uh, the lady that passed away in the jail, um, uh, mediation is scheduled on her claim against the jailers and against QCC for January eleventh, twenty twenty-four. And I'm gonna need one of the commissioners to participate with me in that mediation session. It's probably gonna be online, but be nice to ha- to have somebody at, at least on the calendar for that. Um, a five-day jury trial is scheduled for October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. And as I make a note, um, Lisa Barron tells me that QCC remains the primary target, but, you know, you never know how these things shake out, I guess. So, um, that's the, just give you on that, so. I, yeah, I, you don't have to make a decision about who's gonna participate on, on January eleventh. I don't need to know. I just need to make sure I have somebody there on the eleventh.
Back up to the ARP money, the idea was, the discussion was, you're gonna run into timeframe and talk into the auditor, concern what's running in the timeframe on spending that money and getting them up and running. So the, the thought process was to take the five hundred thousands, what was brought out in the ARP committee, use it on something now that we can use in the general budget out of the general fund, and then divert that money back over to this other project. So if it goes past the deadline for the ARP money.
Yeah, I, I had that concern right off the get-go that we weren't gonna spend the ARP money in a timely fashion and also was gonna be put in an investment account. Originally, those were against the rule.
Well, we don't, we don't lose the opportunity to, to have this program to help people because we feel it's, uh, the thought was it's necessary to have these people sign up. I mean, to.
Yeah, explained to me too that, uh, that it would be not necessarily used for connecting to, uh, the new sewer lines, but if there were folks that were having problems with their septic systems, that, you know, they could apply maybe for some assistance.
Unless I understand it, after the sewer line was hooked up, that would be, then if there was extra money, that could come into play, but not to start.
Not before.
Right. And, uh, second thing, I, as I told you, unless one of you want to do it, since I'll, this could be ongoing with the Hebling thing. I mean, I know I'm gonna be here in twenty twenty-five, so if, uh, you know, unless one of you guys want to do it, I, I would be willing to sit in on that. I'm not gonna comment. I would be willing to sit in and monitor behalf of the commissioners.
Do it, do it.
And the third thing was, I just got a question. I, I don't know, maybe it's nothing. I mean, you are the town attorney for Culver and you're our, our attorney on this deal with the tourism. Is there?
Yeah, I haven't been advising the town of Culver.
Okay, I just think, and so there's no count, okay, I just make sure there's no co- I know they have their own no tourism.
I, I told them that I, I had a conflict and couldn't get involved in that.
Okay.
So they're, that's why they haven't.
Okay.
Involved me on the thing, but.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, you're right. I mean, that's, but they're the ones that are promoting it because as they show they're one of the bigger revenue sources and have been complaining that it's not, the money's not distributed appropriately, so.
You want to have anything else with Jim?
No, thank you.
Okay, orders reported.
I have your November thirtieth minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the November thirtieth meeting.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the minutes of the November thirtieth, uh, meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And I have the claims.
Motion to approve the claims as presented.
Second. Motion made to approve the claims as submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Come to public comments. Is there anyone here having any public comments they want to make? Yes, sir, come on up. Who's take your name, title?
Good morning, Jesse Bohannon, President, Marshall County Council, five eleven Cavalier Drive, Culver.
Nicole Cox. I'm on the county council as well, and I sit on the ARP, uh, funding committee, subcommittee, and I'm a forty-one eleven Olive Road, Plymouth.
All right. And I just wanted to comment briefly on, on two items. I wanted to thank you, Stan, for clarification on that, uh, um, that ARP funding. Um, Mr. Clevenger, um, when you guys met with, uh, Mr. Levin and then the, uh, the attorney from the sewer district was there as well, right? Um, what was the, um, the purpose and, and content of that meeting?
The regional sewer district, uh, was concerned there was no activity moving forward with the AR, the ARP money being used to set up the, uh, through the foundation, the grant process. And they, they had the same concerns I had is, is that that was, that would have some issues with the legal requirements of, uh, number one, setting it in an investment account, and number two, expending the funds within a time period required by the ARP guidelines.
Right, and what concern?
So they were just looking to see what was going on and how it was going.
And I, I would say frankly, what concern is it of theirs?
Well, because it's a big concern of theirs that if they set up, uh, a, a collection system around the lakes and there's somebody that's having trouble connecting in, that if they can apply for those funds and connect in, they're gonna be able to have all those people hooked into the system. If, if, if they do a collection system, everybody's gonna be required to hook in.
Right.
Whether they got the money or not.
Yeah. It's, it's my understanding that they were asking us to change the agreement and they were asking us to basically write them a check for five hundred thousand dollars.
Initially, they asked for seed money and, and you, we decided not to do that. Um, so.
Yeah, because Mr. Levin told me that, that you guys pressed in pretty hard about that, that they wanted the five hundred thousand dollars.
Well, no, they didn't press them hard about it. They just basically said, look, if you can't use the five hundred thousand the way you guys were talking about using it, we would renew our quest for the seed money.
Okay, yeah, so just, yeah.
They're going forward with their
Right.
On anticipation though.
Okay, so just to, just to clarify, um, what we had talked about with, uh, with Senator Dalton, with, uh, Mr. Levin, uh, with the ARP committee, we basically suggested a logistical move where we would pay, um, for some general fund expenses next year with that ARP money and then simultaneously set aside that five hundred thousand dollars earmarked in the rainy day fund or somewhere like that so that it can be transferred over to the, uh, the community foundation without strings attached. And so it would fulfill the spirit of our agreement, even though it would take some logistical moves to be able to make that happen, so.
And I was just, uh, pointing out to Mr. Levin that it's the AR, you know, the executive is supposed to be part of the plan for that. So it seemed to me there should be some communication involved in it.
Yeah.
And at that point, there hadn't been as far as I knew.
Yeah. So, and I hope you guys would agree that if we, if we did that logistical move to, uh, pay general fund money or some general fund expenses with the ARP money and then simultaneously set aside general fund money, um, for that, uh, sewer poverty relief fund, that we would be fulfilling the, yeah, spirit of our agreement.
Well, but then what are you gonna use the five hundred thousand, eight, ARP money for?
To pay general fund expenses.
Okay, well.
And we, we would accomplish the same goal. It would be, you know, five hundred thousand set aside for sewer district poverty relief and then the ARP funds would be, would be expended, so we.
Did Mr. Dalton have any, was he the one that had some concerns too about the?
And that would, that would fulfill his concerns, so, yeah. So that's, that I think would be the plan going forward. If you guys could agree to that, I think it meets the spirit of what we had agreed to, so. Yeah. Um, the other item I did want to bring up is, um, the, uh, Marshall County Tourism item. Um, and I would share Mr. Klotz's concerns that I, I would like to see him, and obviously I don't speak for the full council, but I think, uh, Mrs. Cox would probably be in agreement, um, as well, um, that making sure that we still do have, um, appointed representation from the rest of the county in that ordinance would probably be, uh, beneficial. Um, that if the council's going to continue to authorize the collection of that tax, um, that it, um, is representative of the other units of government and then not simply of the commissioners. So, um, possibly a, a seven-member board that still allows, uh, the other municipalities to make appointments would probably be advisable. That would be my suggestion, so.
And how would you advise then that those other communities, like Argus, like, um, how, how, how do you support the state statute that they've got to be involved with conventions or, um?
Tourism.
Tourism. It is, we have to, the applicants have to qualify for the state statute.
Yeah, I would, and I would agree with that. And obviously, um, there are people that reside in those communities that, uh, that work in those businesses, maybe not in those towns. Um, but say for instance, you know, I would say that my business, even though I'm not technically in tourism or conventions, is heavily tied to that. And there's, you know, lots of folks all over the county that, uh, they, they are participating in, in things that are tied to, uh, to tourism. There's innkeepers and restaurateurs and, um, you know, even somebody who runs an Airbnb would be in that situation. So people are distributed all over the county who, uh, participate in that, uh, in that field, so.
And I agree with you, Jesse, and, and I think through the application process, we will have those people apply and we can verify then that they meet with state statute as well as the local ordinance.
All right. Would you guys be willing to give the council appointment on that board then?
Then we got a six-member board.
Yeah.
No, we would just be one, we're just one of the five. It, it does concern me that every time we, we create something around here, you all have the majority of the appointments on it, even though the.
Where are the executive branch of government too?
And it's state statute.
Yeah.
Right. And obviously you guys get to set that up any way you want to, but the council authorizes the collection of the tax.
So?
We have an appointment.
So we'd like, we'd like to have an appointment.
Well, the state statute says the county executive makes the appointment. Doesn't say the county council has the execu-
You can cre- you can create the ordinance to allow us to have an appointment.
The commissioners can, if that's what they want to do.
They're out of state statute.
What's that?
Where are the state statute then? He just said the county executive is the one that.
Determines the members and the membership pat, like, how they're applied, yes.
According to the new ordinance that's put in place.
The ordinance has to meet state statute.
So you're saying you don't have the option anymore to allow the other municipalities to make appointments?
If they wanted to do that, they could, but
That's what I'm saying.
Point is that the, they have to make sure they have a simple Point is that they have to make sure they have a simple majority of people that fit the requirements of the statute. And the more people you have making the appointments, the less likely you're going to have of fitting that role.
You can just make that a requirement that everyone appointed has to meet this, meet the criteria.
Well, I don't know that you want to do that, but.
Where there's a will, there's a way.
I would suggest to you, there's not as many people that you, that qualify in Marshall County under those requirements that would be interested in serving on that board.
I'm, I'm just saying from a, from a transparency perspective, the, the division of power is always good and it does always give us some concern when every board that we create around here, the commissioners end up having control of the board. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you guys very much, and, yep.
Anyone have public comments? If not, we're on to commissioner items. First one here is to ratify the, ratify the termination of the emergency declaration for the burn ban, 2023-11.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made second to ratify the termination of the emergency declaration for the burn ban in Marshall County, 2023-11. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next thing is the Council on Aging, Section 5311 Grant Agreement. We approved the application.
Janice is here.
Janice, or she's here. Janice, oh, there it is. Come on up, Janice. We approved the application. Now it's time to accept the agreement, correct?
That's correct.
Sorry, I didn't see you back there.
That's okay, I'm just here in case you had any questions.
State your name and title.
Janice Holliday, I'm the executive director of the Marshall County Council on Aging.
Thank you. Anything you want to say before we?
No, like I said, you, you approved the, the application back in May. So this is just following through with the contract for 2024.
I make a motion that we approve the Section 5311 Grant Agreement between Marshall County Council on Aging.
Second. Motion made second to approve the 5311 Grant between, for the Marshall County Council on Aging. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve, excuse me, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the same agreement that's typical of these 5311s, just a different project number.
Right. It's still, this is just our operating funds for next year. So we will have our capital ones. We requested two vans for next year too. So that'll be coming shortly as well.
And is that set up for all three commissioners to sign or is it just one?
Just, just one.
Just one? It's a docu-sign? And the auditor has copies of that if you need it. And I think, did you get your copy back?
Yes, thank you.
Did you get them vehicles taken care of?
I do, I have the applications right here to give you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And before we move on to highway bidding, we got evaluations coming up here for the employees. Do you guys have a date you'd like to have them?
After one o'clock after our next meeting, which would be the 18th.
Is that good for you?
We normally do it after the second meeting and you have to start at one o'clock.
Can you give that advertisement?
You usually set those up.
Jennifer does.
Jennifer does? Okay.
Well, she didn't last year, but she will this year.
Yeah.
Because it's all about her.
It's all about her.
And before we start the opening bid for the Highway Department bids, we're going to take a five-minute recess?
I got a text message. Mark Gidley's term is going to be expiring at the end of this year on the Plymouth BCA, and he would like to be reappointed.
Okay.
And that's a commissioner's appointment.
I didn't realize we had appointment at Plymouth BCA.
Yeah.
That was news to me. Do we have to, we are, we able to do that today?
Are we going to do it next meeting? But I just.
Yeah, okay.
We can do it next meeting.
Would you please put that on agenda for next meeting, Angie?
BCA, does that need to be politically balanced?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's why he's on there.
Is that state statute? We appoint one for that? I wasn't aware of that.
Mark's always been, he's been on there.
He's been on a long time, I just didn't, we appointed him.
He's a commissioner's appointment.
So we're going to take a five-minute recess here and then we'll open the bids for the Highway Department in a few minutes.
Do we want to do it at 10, it's advertised at 10:10. What time are the bids supposed to be in?
Oh, they were last.
Okay, all right.
We're open.
We can do five, 10-minute recess.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, we are all set.
Okay, we're back in session. We're gonna have the opening of the highway bids. Jason, turn it over to you and our distinguished attorney.
Go ahead and call.
Thank you. I just think I've been calling all day.
One of the days now we're at.
Yeah.
We'll send a note to Bobby.
Okay, they advertised for bids. They've got 20 items that they've advertised for. It's pretty much the same list that they've done year after year. The idea they were going to open those that have been bidding, take them under advisement, see that everything's in order. Not that we're gonna buy everything that's on the list, but we'll at least have a starting point when the highway department needs supplies. Correct?
Correct.
The first item is 5,000 gallons more or less lubricating oil. This says item two.
We do double, so series one and two. No one. To my knowledge, these are twos.
C E R E S, Sears, Series Solutions.
Item one, I just seen at the bottom.
Yeah. Uh, Series Solutions, Wild Bash, Indiana. I think they're the company that's providing you petroleum and oil products now, right?
Yeah.
And they've got a bid form and a host of different description of motor oils and transmission fluids at varying unit prices. It's the only one we've got, so I won't bother even rating any one of them. They got a bid bond that accompanies their bid form, so appears that... That was the only item one we had?
That is so far.
An item two, 1,500 gallons more or less of D E F. And again, we have a bid from Sears Solutions Cooperative.
You stamp one.
Yeah.
You stamp one?
Do I just stamp one of these?
If there's a...
No, there's a duplicate.
There's a duplicate, stamp them both.
Okay.
Can you add your stamp?
Yeah.
Yes.
He went down.
Perfect, thank you.
Oh, we're starting off all in.
Please, please.
It'll be a long one.
The item two for the D E F has a unit price, $2.29 per gallon. Item three, one-year supply of tires and tubes.
Nothing.
We have no bids on it. Item four, repair parts and accessories as needed.
We do, and I'm clicking with duplicates, so there's two in there.
We received one from Weers International Trucks, Inc.
That stamp is a great invention.
Yep. We have a bid on bid form, looks like they got a certification. Repairs and national food accessories as needed.
Is that with Weers? Pardon me, is that with Weers?
Weers, yes. Do we have any other item fours?
I want to see them.
Item five, 80,000 gallons more or less of dust control calcium chloride. We have a bid from Great Lakes Chloride, Inc. Their bid form shows 38% solution at unit price of $1.19. And that's... And then also 42% solution at $1.29. Bid bond, part form bid. Item six, 30,000 tons more or less of crushed limestone. We have a bid from Beam Store Bor Aggregates in Hammond. Material size number two, $9.90 per ton, F O B plant price. Has a certification. Bid bond. Non collusion affidavit's on the bid form. Do we have any more of...
No sixes.
No sixes.
Seven.
Item seven, 30,000 tons more or less crushed limestone delivered to the highway. We have one from Beam Store Bor Aggregates again, Hammond, Indiana.
Yes, one.
Number two, material size, delivered price, $30.90 per ton. They got prices for other material sizes, as did the other one. You got another bid for seven? We also have one from Kokomo Gravel.
Goes with that one, I think.
Oh, that goes with that previous one. Or no, it goes with this one, sorry.
This one doesn't have number two, it's got number nine, commercial limestone at $26.50 per ton. Another, others there. What do they have priced? Probably a certain bid bond. Looks like they've got everything for that.
Number eight?
Number eight, 100,000 tons more or less pea gravel, processed gravel blank. So Beam Store Bor Aggregates again, have, looks like all the forms set up. Material size, I'm gonna go with fill sand, $5.45 per ton. I will make these available, anybody that wants to review them after the... Still on eight?
See if media can hang around.
Nope. This is from...
Kokomo gravel. The what?
Alcart County Gravel, Inc. This is pea gravel, number 12, at 13 F O B.
Inked bore number one.
Item nine, 100,000 tons more or less of pea gravel, again Beam Store Bor Aggregates. Fill sand, 26.45 a ton.
Item ten, item ten.
Item 10, 600,000 gallons more or less by Tumis Materials as needed.
You got more than one bid on this?
We got two. One from Asphalt Materials, Inc., Indianapolis, Indiana. And AE 150 per gallon is customer facility, $2.865, job site, $2.865. Still on the same item. AE 150, $3.30.
There's the...
Miss one.
Well, you caused me to mess up.
Bid item number 11, 10,000 tons more or less of vituminous patching mix or cold mix. Have a bid from Fen and Brown.
You gotta watch closer, you check this out.
Standard cold patch, $90 per ton, F O B plant.
I think so.
Is this number 11 still?
Yes.
Another one under item 11 from Millstone Contractors. By Tumis Mix Patching Mix or Cold Mix as needed, unit price, F O B South Bend, $140. Still item 11, Central Paving, Inc., F O B our Logan Sport Plant. By Tumis coated aggregate Their form is a little different. Item 12, 40,000 tons more or less hot mixed base binder surface material.
Not a real good place to stamp those, so I just, I picked this one up. Kevin Dunlop, he can send it back.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the unit price somewhere here. Okay, this, uh, this bid also includes pea gravel, vituminous mixing items of 11, as well as the hot mixed asphalt. So we'll have to go back and pick one up. But the pea gravel, the unit price was 14.50. Hot mix, cold asphalt patching mix, I think we looked at that, it was 1.50. And then item 12, 25 type B commercial at 64. So those, this one is for previous items that were hooked in.
You want to help again.
But they'll have to be...
They'll have to be pulled out, yeah. Reexamined. You put these on a spreadsheet, Jason?
If it's not, let's come up with your stamps.
Denise puts most. I should've said that, yes.
Oh, I nominated it.
Okay, still on item 12. This one's from Fen and Brown. Hot mix, see bid prices. F O B plant, Leesburg, base 25 millimeter type B, 58 per ton.
Double stamp.
Hot mix, hauled and applied, 83 per ton. And still item 12?
Still item 12.
This one from EB Paving, Plymouth, Indiana. Hot asphalt concrete base, they refer to it as number five base, $93 a ton, number five base, 68 a ton.
You have another here stamped somewhere. Yeah, there you go.
Still on 12?
Last 12.
Last 12, from Millstone Contractors.
Look at two.
Pardon me?
Yeah, there's a look in there.
9.5 millimeter, $74 unit price. Don't think I had a apple comparison. Item 13, 5,000 feet more or less corrugated pipe as needed.
That gets the whole last of them.
Metal Congress, Inc. And there's their annual bid, a whole host of galvanized, aluminumized corrugated drainage And various other types of pipes.
Did you see another one?
There's one of this here.
Guess that's a date.
Price, price, price. I don't see one.
That's what I thought.
There should be two, but I don't see one.
I think that envelope goes with that. So it's on the backside of the long page?
Uh, it's going backwards. Item four.
Okay, we found an item four, which is repair parts and etcetera, etcetera, accessories from St. Regis Culvert. They have a price list of various materi, items.
Huh?
Missed one?
No, that's second page, right there.
This is an item four, we missed? Okay, item 14, still on the, oh, this is galvanized steel, aluminumized steel or aluminum. This is bid from Delco Material Culverts. Debco. And they too have a product catalog with a whole host of 2024 catalog items. Still item 14?
Still item 14.
Item 14, St. Regis. And likewise, they have a host of items.
One of Doug's stamps.
15.
1.50 road signs as needed. See the bid from Stelo Products. And they too have a listing of various signs, most of them are standard signs.
Let me see one on this one. That's backside.
Nope.
Thank you.
I'm still on road signs. Item 16, 2,000 gallons more or less, standard quality traffic paint. C Hughes Milling, Inc., doing business as air marking company. Solid or skip yellow or white, 275,000 linear foot at 18 cents.
Where's that from?
Still on 16?
This will be 18, and this will be the final.
Uh, we have none for item 17, equipment rental. We have an item 18, pre-engineered bridge from... No. We have no item 19, no item 20. And they have various prices for rails, bridges, decks, et cetera. Look at the certification.
Just one I'm missing?
Mm-hmm.
Here's one.
Good catch. And a bid bond. Yeah, there's a copy. President, that's all the bids we've had.
Do we have a motion to take these bids under advisement?
So moved.
Second. Motion made, second. We take all the highway bids for materials for next year, 2024, under advisement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, second, adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned.